I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. A roll call.
Mayor Yanish.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Amen.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dawkin.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Tabliek.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Would you all please stand as we say the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under your God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I'd like to ask if there are any proposed additions. Hearing none or seeing none, we'll move into the consent items. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent items as written. All those in favor say aye. Is there any discussion first of all?
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. We'll move right into the scheduled hearings, the truth in taxation. Finance Director Steve Okens.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, fellow staff members, and taxpaying citizens of the city of Wimmer. There are some handouts on the table to my left over here for anybody in the audience that maybe hasn't grabbed one. The handout simply is just a copy of the calendar, the budget calendar, that the city has used along with two resolutions that the council will be asked to pass tonight. The first resolution will be asking them to set the property tax levy, and the second one will be to ask the council to set the overall budget, including the operating budget. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as a point of information, the state legislature passed a law whereby citizens in 1989, the truth in taxation law was designed to help property owners understand how their property tax is determined and how that would affect local operating budgets. And the process that you see there with the calendar actually starts with the city's staff getting information assigned to them from the city administrator's office, asking them to submit their requests by July. That information then is gathered, and the administrator's office works with the mayor to come up with a recommended budget that he will, he submits to the city council. There's been numerous meetings held since the mayor has proposed his budget to the city council. Some of the information that has been published is indicated that the mayor made recommendations to cut in a number of different areas. He had recommended cutting 50 percent of the travel budgets that had been submitted or requested. He also had submitted 35 percent recommended cuts for memberships and professional services. And these were recommendations that had been submitted to the city administrator's office from, from city staff, and then her recommendations to him, and they worked together to come up with his final proposal to the city council and the finance committee. The finance committee held a, a number of work sessions with, with the full council, starting in September. The ninth of September, they held the first work session where they met with community groups, gathered their input. Their second work session was September 30th, where they again reviewed the capital improvement program, the equipment replacement program, and, and a number of other items, and discussed in all these meetings what the proposals from the mayor were. The budget calendar was amended in October primarily due to the Thanksgiving holiday and the scheduling of, of council meetings and committee meetings and the time that it would require to compile any kind of recommended changes that they would have. Then on November 19th, the finance committee met again, again with a work session with the entire council. And those meetings are later on in your, in your meeting tonight, they're in your packet. They've been published also on the city's website, as well as the general operating budget, the, the waste treatment budget, as well as the capital improvement program. They're all out on the city website, and with technology, that's the route that the city has chosen to, to try to do more so than, than written and, and published copies. The library also should have had a copy available to the public as well. At the November 19th council meeting, the finance committee along with other members in the work session of the council at great length discussed the mayor's recommended budget as well as other proposals. Basically, the action taken at that meeting was to reinstate all, 100 percent of the travel, the membership and professional services that had been recommended to be removed. They also had two minor changes. One was to add $10,000 for the WAM market funding business center. They also recommended adding $5,000 to the holodeck parade. Those fundings basically came out of savings that had been projected. There was a 12 percent projection included in the, in the budget, in the mayor's budget for health insurance costs for city employees. After the mayor had had those recommendations, the city received notification that we would experience a 0 percent increase on the city's health insurance premiums. So, at the November 19th council meeting, the finance committee as well as the rest of the council recommended reallocating those dollars to the capital program as well as the two items that I, that I just mentioned. The only other change that the committee did at that meeting was to redesignate the, the money that was going to be given to the West Central Integration Collaborative, and they reallocated that to a professional services line item in the non-departmental and instructed staff to prepare RFPs for interpretive services in, in which the money that went to West Central Integration Collaborative was paying for. That, Mr. Mayor, brings us to the meeting tonight where you are to gather public input. It's a public meeting, and, and so with that, Mr. Mayor, I will turn it over to you and any public comments.
Thank you, Don. Run away. At this point, I would like to open the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none or hearing none, I will open the conversation or the hearing to the council. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think at this, at this time, I think I'm going to introduce the resolutions for the, for the levy and for the budget. So I would introduce a res, a resolution setting the, the levy at $4,139,734. That's made up of $3,992, $3,992,734 to the general fund, and $147,000 to the street and infrastructure improvements. And in addition to that, it has to be on the same resolution, we will add $170,000 for the HRA levy that, that will be in effect for them. So I will introduce that.
I'll second it.
The motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution that Councilman Anderson recommended. This takes two resolutions, am I right?
You will follow with the budget after the levy.
Okay. Thank you. And that is a roll call?
Yes, resolution.
Roll call. Go ahead. Discussion.
Were we going to talk about the Economic Development Commission? Budget?
That's later.
We will be?
That would be later, yes, it would be. It would be. Right, we will.
That's item nine on the agenda.
Okay.
Any further questions or comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tabliek.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that resolution carries.
Mr. Mayor, I would introduce the second resolution adopting the budget for fiscal year 2014. Total amount of $34,43,843. That's $15,757,236 for general operating, capital improvements in the amount of $6,870,450, special revenue internal, $671,268, debt service, $2,499,201, and the enterprise wastewater in the, in the amount of $8,245,688.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded for the resolution to adopt the budget for the fiscal year 2014. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tabliek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that resolution carries. Thank you. With that, we will open the hearing for the ordinance authorizing issuance of hospital revenue notes and the Rice Care Center project. Mr. Frensky, would you like to speak to us about that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. We have, are here tonight for a public hearing on issuing the revenue bonds for 2013 series and also for 2014 series for improvements at the Rice Care Center and for improvements within Rice Home Medical. The two issues for 2013 is a total of $9.1 million, which is, includes $6.2 million of new debt, and along with $2.9 million of rolling over in a current refunding of the 2011 issue. And then the series 2014 issue would be $2.8 million of new money. As we had shared at the last meeting, we are doing this in two separate issues with the idea of staying within the $10 million bank qualified limit. And so working with city staff, this is the approach that we have done in order to stay within those limits. We have looked at, and we have been working with local banks on negotiating rates. We have very competitive rates that we have validated through financial advisors that we've used when we've issued our previous bonds, and we are very pleased with the competitive nature of those rates. And that would be our request for tonight.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the audience or comments? Hearing none, I will open it up to the, excuse me, I will open it up to the council.
I'd move approval.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the ordinance authorizing the issuance of hospital revenue notes. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I'm sorry, discussion. Roll call. Yes, go ahead.
I, I just have a question of our finance director. Essentially, what we're doing is like co-signing the note in the event of a, of a default on the part of the hospital, it would become city obligation. Is that my understanding?
Mr. Mayor, member, member Anderson, since the Rice Hospital is a component unit of, of the city, and the definition of a component unit is where the governing body, you as the council, points the board and is responsible for any debt and its issuance thereof, basically the hospital, since it's a straight revenue note, the, the monies would have to come from the hospital, there's no geo-backing proposed for this issue. There were, in consulting with our financial consultant, there are some benefits. They, they did get very favorable rates working with the local institutions, as well as just the lines of communication with the, with the local lending institutions. They did, were able to gain maximum flexibility as far as if the council remembers a lot of the bond issues that the city sells, there is usually a call date, and it's usually out there eight years or so. And in the proposals that were, were received from the local institutions, there was a five-year option and a seven-year option before interest rates change. And then the final benefit that the hospital had in, in working with the local institutions and doing it this route is that they were able to minimize the upfront cost to issue. So in essence, it is a hospital revenue note. It would not fall back onto the city taxing authority.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tabliek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that resolution carries.
That's an ordinance, Mr. Mayor. Now we need the resolution accepting the offer of sale on those $9.1 million revenue notes. It's a follow-up action.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded for, would you like to?
A resolution accepting the offer on the sale of hospital revenue notes for the Rice Care Center project and providing for their issuance.
Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tabliek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries. Thank you. And now we will open the hearing for the ordinance authorizing issuance of hospital revenue notes. Did we just do that?
Nope, second project. You're doing good.
Second one.
He's got a second project now.
Okay. Would you like to talk to us about that one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's what I referred to as the series 2014 issue in the amount of $2.8 million. I believe that's the correct gen item.
That is correct.
Yes, sir. There's two separate ones, Bill.
Yep. And that, once again, is also funding the Rice Care Center and the Rice Home Medical improvements. And as I stated, we had to do them in two separate issues in order to stay within the $10 million bank qualified limit.
Thank you. Is there any?
Let's see if the public, if there's any comments.
Is there any public comments? If not, I will turn it over to the council for their discussion.
You need to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
I would move approval.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the, approve the.
The ordinance.
Ordinance authorizing the issuance of hospital revenue notes. Then we open that up for discussion if there is any. Roll call. Go ahead.
Yeah, just a question. Is this going to carry the same interest rate as the, the previous?
Yes, they, the, the two notes were negotiated at the same time, and the interest rate for the first seven years is 3.3 percent on both of the notes.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tabliek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, there's a subsequent resolution to accept the sale of the hospital revenue notes for the Rice Care Project.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that?
I, I would move that recommendation. Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to.
Accept, accept. The offer on the sale of the hospital revenue notes for the Rice Home Medical and Care Center project and providing for their issuance.
Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tabliek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tabliek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries. Thank you. And now we will open the hearing for the ordinance authorizing issuance of hospital revenue notes. Did we just do that?
Nope, second project. You're doing good.
Second one.
He's got a second project now.
Okay. Would you like to talk to us about that one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's what I referred to as the series 2014 issue in the amount of $2.8 million. I believe that's the correct gen item.
That is correct.
Yes, sir. There's two separate ones, Bill.
Yep. And that, once again, is also funding the Rice Care Center and the Rice Home Medical improvements. And as I stated, we had to do them in two separate issues in order to stay within the $10 million bank qualified limit.
Thank you. Is there any?
Let's see if the public, if there's any comments.
Is there any public comments? If not, I will turn it over to the council for their discussion.
You need to close the public hearing.
We closed the public hearing.
I would move approval.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the, approve the.
The ordinance.
Ordinance authorizing the issuance of hospital revenue notes. Then we open that up for discussion if there is any. Roll call. Go ahead.
Yeah, just a question. Is this going to carry the same interest rate as the, the previous?
Yes, they, the, the two notes were negotiated at the same time, and the interest rate for the first seven years is 3.3 percent on both of the notes.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tabliek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, there's a subsequent resolution to accept the sale of the hospital revenue notes for the Rice Care Project.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that?
I, I would move that recommendation. Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to.
Accept, accept. The offer on the sale of the hospital revenue notes for the Rice Home Medical and Care Center project and providing for their issuance.
Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tabliek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. Thank you much, very much, Mr. Frensky. I would like to open the hearing for the currency exchange license. Mr. Sunvold, is he available?
I don't think they show up, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a quick explanation. Pursuant to the Minnesota Department of Commerce who controls the currency exchange licensing, the local institutions or local governments are asked to hold a public hearing where the citizens may enter comments if they so choose on the operation of the currency exchange licenses. We do have two, and they should be two hearings. We have Bennett Ventures, Inc., and Quick Funds, Inc. Subsequent to taking any public testimony, it is staff's recommendation that we approve both currency exchange licenses.
We'll take the first one first, and Mr. Sunvold, Quick Funds, is there any discussion amongst the audience? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and open the hearing to the, open the discussion to the council. Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move to approve the license for Sunvold, doing business as Quick Funds, Inc.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the.
Currency exchange license.
Currency exchange license for zero case Sunvold, doing business as Quick Funds Incorporated. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
You need to, Mr. Mayor, it's okay.
Pardon me?
Regular motion is acceptable here.
Motion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. And the second would be the currency exchange license for Bennett Ventures, doing business as checks, cashed, and payday loans. I'll open the hearing. Is there any public comment? Hearing none, I open it to the council.
Mr. Mayor, move approval for the license for Bennett Ventures, Inc.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the currency exchange license for Bennett Ventures Incorporated, doing business as checks, cashed, and payday loans. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. At this point, we will open up the Wimmer City Council open forum. Is anyone scheduled to talk?
I'm sorry, no, sir, there's nobody on the signed up roster.
Okay. And consideration of the County of Ohio County and City of Wimmer Economic Development Commission 2014 budget, Mr. Renquist, would you like to speak to us about that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, assembled audience and taxpayers. The Economic Development Commission has went through its due diligence process and has, our joint powers commission, actually three of the members are here tonight, three city council members and three county commissioners, have approved a, a budget that we bring, we submit to the council for their approval, a total of $511,000, $511,207. The 2013 budget for information purposes was $506,707, is a $4,500 difference, which is less than 1 percent. And we had a, I think we had a good process where we went through our budget, and a copy of the 2014 budget has been submitted to the council members for their review, and, and I could go through line item by line item, but the biggest, probably the most substantial change is following the recommendation of more than one person. The EDC ag renewable energy specialist position has been changed to a countywide business development position, being more reflective of the different business opportunities that we have in the county. Agriculture and its various tentacles are still extremely important to us, but we thought that reflected the position better, so that, that position has been changed. And the Agriculture and Renewable Energy Development Committee now for, actually its program administration has an $8,012 budget, having removed all the personnel expenses to general operations. Following recommendations and considerable discussion under our economic development contributions, the EDC was making a $18,000 contribution to Southwest Initiative Foundation that has been removed. The EDC was making a $2,500 contribution to the Community Development Coalition, or Community Marketing Coalition, and that, that has been removed. Personally, I supported both of those, but there's times when the employee says yes, sir, to the board, and that's, that's in particular what, what happened. In the end, Mr. Mayor, we ended up with a levy that for the fifth year in a row is at $455,000. We, when you say, well, wait a minute, Steve, you've got a budget of $511,207, the other of your budget in reserves so you don't have to borrow money to finance your operations. So 50% of $511,000, we'll just say is 255 for simple math. 255 and 405 makes 6660. The EDC, you may remember a couple of years ago, the EDC and the and the city both allocated $75,000 for the Tiger Grant that the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad was going for to have the bypass to the railroad in western Wilmer and perhaps rail rail traffic into our industrial park as we all go after the manufacturing plants that we'd like so much. So if you add that $75,000 to the figure, you've now used up the set, the entire $734,000.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I had to move approval of the the EDC 2014 budget as presented.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the EDC budget as presented. Just a motion?
Discussion.
There's discussion. I think Councilmember Almond had his hand up at one point.
Discussion, go ahead.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks again, Steve, for being here. We discussed this at the board meeting. It would be nice to have the minutes of those meetings sent to the council people prior to approving this budget. I was, I was, I'm still surprised, Steve, at how we're how we're sitting on taxpayers' money as $700,000. And where it was, or where it came from in the past, or what fund it came from past, is still that. We're sitting on the city of Wilmer's and the County of Ohio County taxpayers' money, and it's not doing anything. I think it's healthy we have a reserve, but could you answer me, as far as the reserve that the state legislature back in 2005 or maybe earlier, when this was started, I believe Wilt Crunkus was the first person that was hired through the EDC. What was the reserve amount that they mandated us to have? I believe there was a mandate in there of some sort.
I'm, I guess I would have to research that, Councilmember Almond. I, right offhand, I, I don't recall. I'd be happy to research it. If 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 I could make just a short comment, the...
Well, go ahead.
The, it is indeed the taxpayers' money. And just as, just as the city has had extensive conversations over being good stewards of that taxpayers' money and has done a very nice job, I might add, and thank you for that, being taxpayer of Wilmer. The EDC annually has a very careful view of our taxpayers' dollars and, you know, as, and I'm, I'm particularly proud of the fact that some people call me cheap. And that includes my wife, by the way, but we won't go there and hoping that she's not watching TV tonight. Having, having said that, for the last five years, we've actually planned on using some of the reserve funds and due to, well, it starts with me, my frugality, and, you know, let's face it, we've we've lost a couple of ag people and that saved the salary and that type of thing. Each year, each, this, the EDC has never come in over budget. And and this will be the first year after five years in a row of of a similar levy that we finally had to dip into the reserve fund monies that we've set aside. So I understand that it's the taxpayers' money. I will say, many economic development organizations have fun, have contingency funds set aside for that, for that big opportunity that that could come our way. You know, we've recently had a short conversation about what will, what will we do if we go after the Veterans Home? Well, a couple hundred thousand from the EDC could be a small part of that, but it could be part of that. And and I like to think that money's sitting there where, of course, these days, we don't get huge amount of interest, but it's drawing interest, and it's available for use for growing this county and the city for the taxpayers. So that's my attitude.
Well, yeah, it's a long, long answer, Steve, and you're good at that. Very thorough. But the shorten, shorten long of this is taxpayers' money, we're sitting on $700,000. Why do we let it accumulate to this point when we had nothing designated for it? We have no outstanding debts to the EDC. We have no capital improvement plan for building a new structure or a new building. We're sitting on $700,000, and in this year's budget, I believe, there's four, another $43,000 put in there.
Taken out.
For reserves. It was in there at the last meeting. I don't know why it's taken out. Ms. Peterson has told me that it's been taken out. Was it taken out?
Oh, we have, we're, we're planning on using $46,082 of reserves to balance this year's budget for the EDC.
Well, then, did something change from the meeting we had with the board? Because there was $43,000 on their reserve funds.
No.
And the condensed one that we have here is is nothing that we had at that meeting.
Again, I would have to go back and research that. I, I possibly, when we dropped the $18,000 for SWF, and we dropped the $2,500 for Community Marketing Coalition, we actually came in at $20,000 less on our budget than what we originally, my original request to the board. And there, there, there had been a, a couple of salary adjustments and some small movement in some other areas. So I think the, the net result was the $4,500 change, and I, and it could be that we needed less from reserves than we did, than we did previously. I would have to research that, Councilmember Almond. I don't have those figures right here.
I'm looking here, and I don't see anything on the condensed version that we received here tonight, but, or if they're, I've got it. Audrey, I have it right here. I'm looking at the same page you're looking at.
Good.
But the, the fact of the matter is, it's not our money. It should be given back to taxpayers, and we don't have any definite plans for it. We've been sitting on this fund since 2005. It's been growing and growing and growing. We've been taken from the taxpayers. Let's give them back the Christmas present. Why do we have to levy again when there's no definite plans, there's no, no concrete project that's coming up that we're going to have to, taxpayers are going to have to fund? The indebtedness is zero, yet we're sitting on that much money. I think, I think it's just pretty, pretty shocking, you know? And you know what? It really wasn't very well discussed at our budget meeting very much, very well, and it was never put into the terms that you just discussed on what it's going to be used for, how it was accumulated, and this is all new knowledge to me. And it's just, it's just discussion. We don't have any concrete to prove anything, nothing factual, nothing on paper. And there's no, there should be a definite plan for the taxpayers to say, this is what this money, you're being taxed for this reason, rather than to put it into a slush account, saying, we'll use it later. I think the money could be better spent giving it back to the people. I made a motion at the meeting, Steve, and I guess I don't let things go if I think I'm right, and other people think, and told me the same thing. Why are we sitting on the taxpayers' money? They said, that's appalling. If they don't have any need for it, why are they taxing us? And to say or to speculate on the future is actually taking from people and putting entrusted in government's hands. And I don't particularly agree with that. It should, the, the reserve fund was not meant for that, and it's gotten way out of hand.
Councilmember Anderson.
Maybe, maybe I can clarify a little bit. I think, I think of that $700,000, we said, there's $405,000 that essentially can't be touched by us, can't be used for operating expenses. That's reserved for, for loans and things like that.
I haven't seen any documentation from the county saying that it had to be used for that.
Well, that's true. I mean, it is a fact. We've, we've gone through that in the past, and you, we received the money from the county in two different increments. So, so that, that's just the way that that is. So that can't be used for operating money. And we need to have a cash reserve of at least half. Some organizations might say more. That's $255,000. So you got $460,000 right there.
I understand the numbers.
Okay. But I, I, I don't, I don't want people to think that we're sitting on cash that we have access to. We don't.
Councilmember Nelson.
I'd just like to ask you if you would address what some other communities might have in their reserves? And also, do you dip into your reserves throughout the year? How do you get your funds, or when do you get your funds? Does that make a difference?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, I, I must admit, I do not know their reserves. I could research that quickly and, and give you a, a report to the council. We, of course, get our funds twice a year after the property tax is paid, or probably a month after the property tax is paid, we actually get the check. And I, the, the money is, is the taxpayers' money, and I think everybody knows that. I have great respect for Councilmember Almond and his opinions. He's, he's well thought out, and he has good reasoning. And, and I'm, I'm comfortable with the reserves that we, we've had from where it comes, and Councilmember Almond, I will supply the, the minutes from the county meetings or whatever when they, when they specify that. I, I think we could have, we could have without devastating consequences, the $200,000 reduction in the levy that you, that you, that you mentioned. I, I really wonder if what the taxpayers prefer is instead of, everybody loves a drop in their taxes. Let's say the EDC did this even one year, or even we, let's say we even somehow managed to do it twice. And then later, we came along with a 40% increase in our taxes because the reserve fund was all gone now, and our levy had to have a significant spike. I can pretty well guarantee you that most people would forget about the two years of reduced taxes as they hung us from the light poles for the, for the increase in taxes. I, I would just submit that to you. I think people like a certain consistency.
Thank you.
And we're not wasting their money. It's sitting there. It's their money.
Thank you, Steve. I do appreciate that, and you're always straightforward with me, and I've always had a good time talking with you. But it's still, I beg to differ on, on the issue. How did, how did that much money from the county all of a sudden just be, has been sitting there? Not being used, not being leveraged, not being loaned out to businesses, not making jobs for the people in the community, good paying jobs, that, that was the intent for? We've been sitting on that money for how many years? Since 2005 or earlier? That isn't good use of taxpayers' money. There's, there's no mission with those funds. It should be directed, and it should be earmarked, and we should get, get that money working for the taxpayers to get a return on our investment. Right now, it's been sitting there, and I, I think that's appalling. We can't show a definite return on our investments with the money that they've contributed to our, to our, to our trust. It, it doesn't make sense. We, we have to be held accountable for it. And right now, I don't see any real big bang that the taxpayers are getting for it, and it's hard to quantify. But right now, I haven't seen the increase in jobs. Right now, the, when you looked at the last report from, from the state of Minnesota and from the 2040 plan, it showed the city of Wilmer was number two on the, number two out of five on wages in the community. That's what's going to drive this. We're going to need good paying jobs. And right now, unless we get that money working for the taxpayers, it's misuse, I call it misuse of funds.
I, I, I don't believe it's misuse of funds, but I do, I wholeheartedly agree we need to have it working for the, for the taxpayers, creating jobs and creating businesses. And we've actually created a, quite a few interesting different finance programs to act as loan guarantees or act as our own revolving loan funds, and we've tried to be aggressive in promoting it, but perhaps we could be more aggressive.
Thank you.
Councilman Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to be clear about what I've got in front of me here, Steve. The $734,751 that we received, this information at our last meeting, our budget meeting, that was as of end of 2012.
Correct.
At the top, you've got reserved a $266,550. Is that for our operating reserve, or is that for revolving loan funds?
That's the, primarily the operating reserve.
Okay, so that's our operating reserve. Then the second line is $34,306, which is unreserved, but it's designated. Is that?
That's what, that's the remainder that's right now in our revolving loan fund account.
Okay, that we have to cover?
Yes.
In case something goes south. Okay, so that leaves a balance of $433,895. And of that, I believe we're taking $46,082, putting it in next year's budget? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that leaves a balance of $387,873 that we also, that we have undesignated reserve, $387,000. I believe that's the money that Mr. Almond's talking about, because we do need to have that reserve account. I mean, I thoroughly believe that. But we still have $387,873 sitting in reserve that's, now, you, you mentioned a few projects that it could go to. Would you reiterate those?
The...
About the railroad, which is...
I believe the Burlington Northern will come back with another request for a Tiger Grant, and we'll ask the EDC, and possibly you'll see them ask the city again for the $75,000 contribution to, in which I think if we look at the bypass on the west side of Wilmer, if we look at possible rail into our industrial park, and if we look, if we look at the closing of possible four different crossings, that'd be money extremely well spent. The, the, the other uses for it really comes down to setting money aside, you know, it's a philosophical difference, and the council and the EDC boards will have to make that determination. I'm really an employee, but we could, we could lower things by the $200,000. Okay? We could. Now, but is the taxpayer better served by a, a one-time, or possibly even two-years lowering of $200,000, and then the tax spike that I spoke of? Or would we, would we be better if we more aggressively promoted into some type of economic development inducement for a rather large company to move into our industrial park and do manufacturing? Or, or, you know, if, if, if we make loans at $50,000, which is our, which is our loan guarantee and our revolving loan, and if we, and if we, if we cover them to 50%, which is what we do, if we made 10 of those loans, which I know we haven't made that many recently, but it's not inconceivable that we could do that, that's $250,000 right there. That we're not going to have to ask the city for help or ask the county for help in covering those loans. We have the capacity to do it ourselves. So that's my philosophy.
I understand that totally, but I, I see, you know, we've got from 2003 to 2012, the, the reserve that's been building and building, and then from eight to nine, you said it added $115,000 from the original, Wilt Crunkus and his crew, that the county was sitting on for years. I, I'm not, I was in favor of his motion at the Economic Development Commission's budget meeting. He, actually, what Mr. Almond proposed then was cutting $200,000 from the EDC's budget and then taking that $200,000 out of reserve, which would leave you $187,000 of undesigned funds. And as far as the, you know, stepping up to the plate, if this railroad thing comes down the road, when they need that money from us for the grant, the city of Wilmer's not sitting so bad financially or fiscally either. We're, we're pretty fiscally conservative, and we're, we have a, a big reserve also. It's millions of dollars. And we would probably step forward if something of that came, came down the pike, along with the county, because we're a county and city together. And I know that they have a reserve fund, and we have reserves. So I think we would step up as a city and county if something really big came down the pike and said, we're going to need 300, 500,000, or maybe even a million dollars. I think that the city and county could come up with that. So I, I understand what Mr. Almond is saying, and I, I don't understand sitting on top of almost a $400,000 reserve, because it is taxpayer dollars, and I, I'm not sure how to handle it, but I, I understand your position totally.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just a question. I know a couple of meetings ago, we were talking about the industrial park, and I believe someone asked how we were going to be marketing that. So if we have this reserve, is that something that we're poised that we could be spending to do some marketing on the industrial park? Is that part of the plan, or are we? Is that part of the plan, or are we, are we poised that we could help something with the development by keeping that reserve in place?
Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, there's two ways where it possibly could be used in the new industrial park. One is on marketing, marketing the industrial park, but quite frankly, in my imagination, I can't, I can't think of spending more than, say, $25,000 in marketing the facility. But what we possibly could do is have some job creation incentives, or tax-based creation incentives, to maybe use as a, as an inducement for a significant company, a job-producing company. And Councilmember Rahm is right, higher wages-producing company to locate in our industrial park.
Councilmember Anderson, do you have a question?
I did. Just a quick comment. I just want to remind the council that the Joint Powers Board is made up of six individuals, three county commissioners, three city council members, and they passed this budget after some debate, some give and take. So this was the recommendation of the Joint Powers Board for this budget. So I think we need to remember that it's not just a city of Willmer decision, it's a joint decision.
We do have a motion down the table, am I right?
Yes.
Okay. To approve as stated?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion? Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one other item I see on here that we also discussed at the EDC budget meeting, and that was the $2,500 allocated to Vision 2040. And I believe that 2040 got money from city, from the county, that they also received from the hospital utilities?
No, but the school.
The school district and the utilities did make a contribution to the hospital.
My consider, or concern there was, city and county have already given, and now the EDC's, you know, putting in an extra $2,500. It seems like we get double taxed sometimes, the taxpayers in Willmer, and the county. Well, no, not the county, just Willmer. Because Willmer's paying, taxpayer in Willmer, taxpayers in Willmer are paying through the city of Willmer, they're paying through the county, Kennewah County, and now they're paying through the EDC. So three times, they're collecting from us. And I'm not against 2040, I'm actually for it. I think it's a great, great motion for this, something for this community to be doing. But it just seems, the taxpayers in Willmer get hacked twice so many times, because it's through the city and the county. And now it's through the EDC, which is combined city and county. Again, if I make a motion to subtract that, I'm going to look like an idiot in the paper. But it's a concern. I don't know if anybody else has that same concern here or not, because it's taxpayers' money. It's our constituents' money, three times out of their pockets. Dennis is right, this full budget did get passed at the EDC budget meeting. That's my concern.
Okay. Any further discussion? A vote? Is that just a motion?
Just a motion.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. With that, we will move into the committee reports. Finance Committee report for November 19th. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think on this one, we have, we have pretty much done our actions. So I'm just going to kind of summarize, rather than read all of this from our 19th, except perhaps the community groups. And we'll start out with the HRA. HRA Executive Director Joe Bankston presented the HRA's fiscal year and June 30th, 2014 budget. Revenues are projected at $919,193.81, which includes a tax levy request for 2014 of $170,000. Expenditures are estimated at $916,823.21, with a provision for reserve of $2,370.60. Ms. Bankston also provided an overview of programs the HRA administers, and reported that the recent federal government sequestration affected funding for some programs. It was noted that the Willmer HRA and Kennewah County HRA will begin the merging process in January 2014, with an anticipated completion date of July 1st, 2014. We thanked her for her presentation, and took the recommendation of the $170,000 levy, which we've acted on. Then the utilities came in and talked to us. General Manager Wes Homp and Finance Director Tim Hunstead presented the Willmer Municipal Utilities 2014 budget. Total revenue is estimated at $30.1 million, with total operating expenditures of $28.4 million. The 2014 intergovernmental transfer to the city is projected to be $275,000. The five-year capital improvements budget was also presented, highlighting some of the major projects that they have anticipated. Noting vehicle maintenance is not done in-house by the MUC, Councilmember Fagerly suggested contracting this work with the city's Public Works Department, or the CAT bus garage. We also talked about wind turbines and LED lights, that was for information. Then the hospital came forward. CEO Schramm and CFO Fenske reviewed the 2014 budget, noting that revenues are projected to be flat compared to 2013. Consequently, in an effort to reduce costs, they are proposing a decrease of 15 FTEs, full-time equivalents, in 2014. Mr. Fenske reviewed the statistics used in preparation of the budget, as well as the current and past year's financial statements. The 2014 budget reflects net operating revenue of $98,391,680, with net operating expenses of $96,387,705. Rice Hospital is projecting a net income of $2,541,214 in 2014. Discussion included inpatient versus outpatient volumes, effects of the federal government sequestration, the shift in payer mix to more governmental sources and less commercial sources, and bad debts. That was for information only. Then we moved into our budget discussion. The mayor had some comments. We talked about the Willmer Design Center, and ultimately approved $32,000 to the Willmer Design Center for 2014. The Willmer Area Multicultural Business Center, WHAM BC, we talked about that, and ultimately approved $10,000 for the Willmer Area Multicultural Markets Business Center. West Central Integration Collaborative, we talked about that. Finance Director Okens also talked about that. We did approve $21,000 in 2014 professional services, and requested staff to do a request for proposals for interpretive services. The Community Marketing Coalition requested $1,500. Oh, that was in 2013, I'm sorry. We approved their request of $2,000 for 2014. Then in the budget itself, travel and training, we reinstated the cuts and funded travel and training budget for the general fund at $84,615, and for the waste treatment fund, $9,950. Dues and subscriptions, similar. We set the dues and subscriptions at $74,700 for the general fund, and $5,600 for waste treatment, and $150 for the airport. Professional services, we set their budget at $471,100, and for the waste treatment, We reviewed the vehicle replacement schedule, and we reminded the folks that we do have the $10,000 limit, that anything over that amount will be brought to the applicable committee for approval. Capital improvements, we made some switches in there. We reviewed that, and I'm going to go through that one a little bit of depth. We reviewed the 2014 capital improvement program, noting that the amount budgeted for the auditorium indoor gun range was increased to $250,000 from the previous report. It was like $20,000 or $30,000 initially, now it's $250,000. Furthermore, $20,000 for the fire department voice amplifiers is going to be removed from the list, because it will be purchased in 2013. After applying these changes, the new total of cash funding needed for 2014 capital improvements Then we talked about the gateways, and ultimately, we approved the 2014 capital improvement program, with the removal of the downtown gateways, leaving the budgeted amount in the program for future use. We had, and then healthcare, we had $183,000 that had to be allocated. That was what we had projected, that the healthcare costs would increase in 2014, but we got a zero increase, so we had to allocate that money, and we allocated $183,000 to the 2014 capital improvements, with $178,000 in there, and $5,000 of that going to the 2014 holidays parade. Then we talked about the levies and the budget, which we had done earlier. There was no old business, and there's no new business. So unless there's questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second. The motion has been made, and seconded to approve the minutes of November 19th, 2013, Finance Committee report. All those, is there any discussion? Councilman Nelson?
Just one question. I know when we talked about it, I thought we had changed, instead of it reading indoor gun range, to read the auditorium, the actual building versus the, what's inside, or not.
I think you are correct. We'll make that change.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yeah, just, the clarification of that last request, Charlene, what was that? Taking off the gun range?
No, I think, I think Councilmember Nelson, and I think at the discussion, if I remember it correctly, at the Finance Committee, was just that we listed as auditorium, and not specific gun range slash auditorium. It's just, it's the one, it's the same building that will be used for the...
Okay, but some of that money is designated to the gun range? I mean...
At this, yes. I mean, we're, it's kind of a placeholder there, as we determine what the costs are for the gun range, and for cleaning the building and such. So it could be used for both. And we'll bring that back, you know, it's, from, for the staffing purposes, right now, I would say that it's really trying to put a placeholder in there, and we don't have enough information to refine those estimates, but we felt we had far too little in there before $20,000.
But the request was to take, it says auditorium and gun range, was to take the gun range off of there? That's what I understood.
No, I don't think that's, I don't think that's the request. That's not how I'm understanding it, unless I'm misunderstanding Councilmember Nelson. I don't believe that was the request or the discussion at the Finance Committee.
I just felt that it should be listed as the auditorium, because we don't know what we're doing in there yet, so that we're designating funds to do what we need to for the auditorium.
For the auditorium, yeah.
Versus saying we're committing $250,000 just to the gun range.
Well, and at this point, again, without the project in front of us, without those estimates, it is, you know, it can be listed, it's really a term of art. It can be listed any way you want it listed in there, but we don't have a proposal for those funds at this point. We are just trying to estimate what we think we might need for improvements to the range, as well as to clean some of the areas of the building as well, to get the auditorium fully operational.
I know it's minor, but why not leave and the gun range on there, so that all these people that are calling us...
I certainly do.
It's fine. I mean, it can be left any way. I mean, it's just a term of art.
I would suggest we leave it, because it was never intended that it would be anything other than that whole building, the whole thing. But if it, if, you know, if it makes everyone feel better, ban the gun range.
That's fine.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. And now we'll move into the Public Works Safety Committee report for November 26th. Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one was public comment, nobody commented from the public. Item number two had to do with the DARE project update, which was for information only. Our chief was asked to provide information in relation to the value and future continuation of the city's DARE program. An overview was given, including statistical information relating to the number of students who have completed the program over the last 24 years. He also noted that the DARE program budget is a collaborative effort, with expenses being shared by the police department and the Willmer School District. The program is more than just a drug and violence prevention program. It also focuses on, focuses on life skills and decision-making. It also provides more officer uniform presence in all of the schools, and contact with elementary students, which in turn promotes a positive image in the community. Our superintendent of schools, Mr. Kiergert, also was there, and he stated that the DARE program is a benefit to the community. It provides a good, relevant educational opportunity, and the law enforcement relationships are important. Again, this information was for, or this item was for information only. Item number two was the Minwest Lift Station slash Lakeland Drive Improvement Project. Bolig engineering and staff are proceeding with the design of improvements for the Minwest Lift Station and Lakeland Drive. The first step in the process of MS Chapter 429 is to order an improvement report. This report will deal with the proposed improvements and provide project funding suggestions. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution that orders the improvement report for Minwest Lift Station slash Lakeland Drive Interceptor Project Number 1310.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to order the improvement report for Minwest Technologies, our Minwest Lift Station Lakeland Drive Interceptor Project Number 1310. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Ahmann.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Item number four had to do with consideration of changes in the process of construction improvements. Again, this is for information only. This had to do with street projects that the city takes on each summer, and how much information should be paired through the council or committee program, or committees. Matter was referred by myself for review of the current process used to approve field changes that arise during construction. Our committee discussed the definition of a field change, and it was agreed that field changes are those changes made due to unknown conditions or plan errors. Our administrator assured the committee that the city takes appropriate action to protect its rights under our contracts. The committee also discussed the current process and suggested adoption of a policy to deal with project changes. Our staff will bring recommendations to our next committee meeting. Item number five, unrolled business, our chief reported the jail census as of last Tuesday was 69, and calls for, from the, calls to the police department numbered 550 for the two-week period previous to that. Our committee discussed creating a process to approve archery ranges. The question was raised whether it was the intent of the recent ordinance revision to allow private outdoor ranges, and if so, how are those ranges to be approved? The committee requested that staff come back with the set objective, set of objective criteria in use in evaluating archery range proposals. We had an individual who lives on the end of town, right next to Cornfield, ask for an archery range, and thus, staff is going to look into it. On item number six, we discussed the Highway 12 corridor study. Staff explained to us that the consultant selection process for the Highway 12 corridor study has been completed. It was a joint effort between the city, county, and MinDOT. Staff presented a resolution authorizing the mayor and city administrator to execute a MinDOT agreement for the Highway 12 corridor study. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce a resolution that authorizes the mayor and city administrator to execute an agreement with the state of Minnesota, Department of Transportation, and Kennewah County to engage the services of a professional consultant to complete a corridor study for Highway 12 through Willmer. That's all the way through Willmer.
Second.
I'll second that resolution.
The motion has been made and seconded to authorize the mayor and the city administrator to execute an agreement with the state of Minnesota, Department of Transportation, and Kennewah County to engage the services of a professional consultant to complete a corridor study for Highway 12 through Willmer. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution carries. If there's no other questions or comments, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Public Works Safety Committee report for November twenty-sixth, two thousand thirteen. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. We'll get into the Labor Relations Committee report for November twenty-seventh. Councilman Ammon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Met November twenty-seventh, conference room one, City Office Building. Called a meeting at four forty-five. There were no public comments. Item number three was the administrative assistance position. Our city administrator, Ms. Stevens, introduced a request to fill the administrative assistance position being vacated at the beginning of the year, two thousand fourteen, due to the retirement, and that the individual would be greatly missed. Ms. Stevens stated that the position would be posted immediately internally and externally. Committee members asked if the job description was updated, and Ms. Stevens stated that it had been reviewed and updated. I also asked if there were new skills that would need to be needed by this new position, and Ms. Stevens stated that it may be an opportunity to see if someone with multiple languages could be hired. Motion was made and seconded and passed to approve the advertisement and hiring for the position of administrative assistants. That motion carried, and I'll move the recommendation of the committee. Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the advertisement and hiring for the position of administrative assistant. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
There be no further business. We adjourned at four fifty-one, I'll move to file a minutes, Mr. Mayor, if there's, unless there's any questions.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to file the Labor Relations Committee report for November twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Consideration and acceptance of grant dollars from FM Global to the Wilmer Fire Department. Chief Hendrickson.
Good evening, Mayor Ganesh, and members of council. In an effort to expand the fire department's public education program, the fire department recently applied for a grant from FM Global, one of the largest commercial insured throughout the world. The fire department has been awarded a grant in amount of one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for the purchase of smoke detectors to assist the fire department start a program called Smoke, Smokebusters. The program will offer smoke detectors free of charge to those that are in need throughout the community. This evening with me, I have Clayton representing FM Global, and I'd like to make a recommendation of the council that we accept the award of one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for the purchase of smoke detectors, so that we may distribute them throughout the community.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded and approved. The acceptance of a nineteen hundred and fifty dollar grant from FM Global. I have a question. What does FM stand for?
Yes, sir, Factory Mutual.
Factory Mutual.
Basically, we are a large property insurance company worldwide. We insure a number of businesses right here in Wilmer as well, so.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to say thank you for, for those folks that will be getting that. That's a, that's a good deal for everybody. Thanks a lot.
It's a good thing. Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So I'd like to present that to them if I could, and sign in from all of you.
We need to vote.
Doug the Doug.
Step right up.
Sir. Buttons right there on top, if you want, we can.
Where's the chipper? We have it. We need to vote. Where's the chipper?
Photo up.
And thank you again, appreciate it.
We need to vote on accepting it. We haven't voted yet.
Is there any discussion? And this is a resolution, so we must, roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That carries. With that, is there any new business? Old business, I should say. Is there any old business?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we all received an update on the gun range from staff, and maybe, Charlene, you could explain to the public, I'm getting calls and people asking me, and maybe you could explain to the public what has done, been done so far, and what happened, and we're proceeding with here.
Certainly, I'm going to ask Kevin Halliday to do that, because he's been the project person working on that, so.
He's the expert.
He can do that a little bit better than I can.
Mary Annish, members of the council, in the last few weeks, we've been working with Braun Intertech, who was the second company that came in to test various spots. They came in and tested thirty-eight spots in the auditorium and four spots in City Hall. And then we have received, very recently, the report, and it kind of confirmed what Green Bay testing has told us, and so there's areas that we have some concerns. We've been working with two agencies, Gosman and Moore, and TSP out of Rochester, who are mechanical engineers and environmental engineers, and they are assisting us, try to help us wrap our hands around this problem. They are putting together proposals that will come to the Finance Committee most likely on December twenty-third, for their cost and their assistance on this, and some estimates that would be both cleanup, which we know will happen, and that will not happen until they first isolate the concern, and that most likely, at their current recommendation, is a decommissioning of the HVAC of the gun range, and possibly have a independent standalone system, and to correct the problems with the other one for the whole building. We're looking at cleanup companies for a separate proposal, and they'll bring all these packages together of, of the three or four-point, or three or four-stage tasks that must be completed to rectify the situation over there. We're trying to do it as fast as we can, but we do believe that most of the activities are so close to the threshold of our bidding law, that they'll be needed to draft bid specs to pull some of these tasks apart, so, and that, you know, is a hundred thousand dollars. And, and if we know it's close to that, we'd probably build specs to take competitive quotes and bring them back to the council. So hopefully, we'll have something for the council on, I believe it's December twenty-third would be another Finance Committee meeting.
Okay, thank you. Add one more item, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
In light of all the bad publicity that we're getting, or the council's been getting, and the city as a whole, I've asked Mr. Peterson to prepare a, an economic update, what Wilmer has done, what we have done this year up to, to date. And, Mr. Peterson, if you would enlighten us and tell us the good news.
Mayor and council, this information was put together with limited time. I did receive some information from Mr. Renquist and Ms. Balding at the EDC as well, but I will start out just relating some construction statistics for two thousand thirteen that relates specifically to the city. The major projects we saw this past year included Wilmer overhead door, Rice Home Medical Project, tenant spaces at the Candy Mall, Marcus Construction Building, Ridgewater College updates, MinDOT's new tower, complete refurbishing of the Somerset Waters Edge and Eagle Ridge Apartments, refurbishing of Walmart, the New Mills Auto Center, work done by the school district to make improvements to a number of their properties. Of course, the major project going on at Torgerson Properties on East Highway twelve, Rice Hospital improvements, the gymnasium and classroom expansion at the Community Christian School, the First Covenant Church expansion, Heartland Orthopedics, Casey's, the Rice Care Center expansions, Wilmer Area YMCA, a large expansion at Stacy's Nursery, work on the compassionate care facility, and, most recently, our own City of Wilmer Salt Storage Shed. So those are major projects that were all in the area of a hundred and fifty thousand plus. Total construction through the month of November totaled almost forty-nine million dollars, and this compares with a total of seventeen million all of last year. So we just about tripled our new construction this year. Of that forty-eight or forty-nine million dollars, over forty-three million of that was either commercial, industrial, or institutional. So to say that our economy is growing would be an understatement. The construction has really taken off this year. Looking ahead to next year, and some of this has a degree of confidentiality required, so I'm not going to mention names, but we're dealing with three large retail projects, three major industrial projects, a restaurant, possible changes to the mall, a number of projects at the Minwest Technology Campus, including the Charter School and some new technology tenants. We're dealing with a group that's interested in doing a brew pub, some more work at Rice Care Center, and a significant expansion at our MinDOT District Eight headquarters. I'll throw out some statistics here, that some of these are based on estimates, because the ability to get real-time numbers is rather limited, working through some of the state agencies, but retail sales for the city of Wilmer now exceed six hundred and fifty million dollars annually, and they exceed seven hundred and seventy-five million for the county as a whole. Our most recent unemployment figures for Caney High County showed that we had an unemployment rate of four percent in October. This compares with a state average of four point eight percent, and it's important to note that as recently as five years ago, the county unemployment rate was eight and a half percent, so we've cut that more than in half in a five-year period. Current labor force for the county is approximately twenty-five thousand. Five years ago, it was twenty-three thousand, so there's two thousand new jobs in the last five years. Caney High County continues to be a net importer of labor. In two thousand and ten, our census population was nineteen thousand, six hundred and ten. Our most recent figure from the state demographer puts our population in excess of twenty thousand three hundred, so we did finally crack the twenty thousand mark. That's up four percent in a period of three years, pretty significant growth. Median family income in Caney High County now exceeds fifty thousand dollars per year, and Caney High County ranks thirtieth out of eighty-seven counties. So our economic health here is undeniably good, and should be getting better with the projects we have moving forward. I'll spend a few minutes talking about some work that the EDC is doing, and the information I got from Mr. Renquist and Ms. Balding was much more comprehensive than I will relate to you, but if you want this information in its entirety, I can provide that as well. The EDC continues to do work, not just in Wilmer, but in the unincorporated areas of the county, as well as the other seven communities in Caney High County. A significant amount of work goes into the Minwest Technology Campus. The campus now has over thirty employers and over four hundred and ten employees. Additionally, the EDC has assisted with activities at the campus, such as a manufacturing showcase, the animal science conference, and U of M Technology Showcase. The Mid-Central Research and Outreach Center is operating at the campus, and there are a number of changes going on there as well, that will lead to the activity from that The EDC has spent a fair amount of time working on ag tech and biotech projects, among those are turkey research and development facility, dairy research, a mastitis facility, stem cell work, and then they've also gotten into the renewable energy side, and it's more than just the N-hydrous ammonia project that they've worked on the last couple of years. They've been involved in projects that deal with methane production, wind energy, biogas, biomass, ethanol, and a solar farm near Atwater. Additionally, the EDC has worked on creating a venture capital model for the county. They continue to work with some other ag product, egg projects, such as Meadow Star Dairy and a cheese plant. There has been work done by the EDC to work through the legislature to create a bio-science corridor and a renewable resource zone that would provide for some financing tools for this county. The EDC continues to be involved with area infrastructure projects on the transportation side, and that's primarily the airport and rail projects, though they also participate in the highway projects that take place around here, and are legislative advocates for those projects. The EDC is continuing to pursue the Veterans Home. They have a technology committee that has received several Blandon grants for website development, and that's been very advantageous for local companies as well. The EDC worked to create the Caney High County Angel Network, which is a group of local investors that have expressed their willingness to participate financially in new projects. And a couple final things. The EDC has worked with the Caney High Power Cooperative and Wilmer Municipal Utilities to map out some land areas that have infrastructure and would be conducive to development in selected target markets, such as food manufacturing and data centers that have very specific infrastructure needs. They hosted a large community meeting on broadband and are working diligently to make broadband available countywide. They have been involved with the Merck grant funding, and that's the Minnesota Intelligent Rural Communities Program. Caney High County was one of the first counties to be funded by Blandon for that, and that project is complete with the except of, with the exception of a closeout audit. That project resulted in a number of initiatives having to do with technology, not just in computer repair, refurbishing, and making them available to lower-income individuals and families, but to do a, they had a trial program and a pilot program to provide some communications, emergency communication availability via computer for senior citizens and disabled individuals as well. So the EDC has been very active, and I think the results of what the city and county do in the area of economic development certainly speaks for itself with the statistics and the construction activity that we're seeing.
Thank you. Maybe you could email those statistics to us, and maybe that you even might put a couple of them in there. Thanks, Bruce.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Bruce, for providing a report. Is there any, I guess we have to, is there any other new business?
Not new business. I just had a question back on the auditorium report. Just, is it, are we going to be able to just stay as we are, keep it open for now, or do we have to make some changes with the public usage while we?
At this point, we're comfortable with the usage that we have there and how we're using it. I mean, we're obviously not able to operate the range until we have a functioning HVA sys, HVA C system for that range.
So we're good with the main floor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Announcement of council committee meeting days. Councilman Anderson.
The Finance Committee will meet Monday, December ninth, at four forty-five.
Councilman Christensen.
Public Works Public Safety Tuesday, the tenth, at four forty-five.
And Councilman Ammon, labor.
No meetings scheduled, but just to inform the council and the mayor, I discussed this issue with Charlene. We're going to be putting together a strategy session through the city council, since we did not have adequate time at our retreat due to the facilitator losing track and direction in facilitating the meeting. We did not accomplish our goals, and to accomplish our goals, we need to get our heads together. So the labor committee is going to start taking on some of these tasks, and I would appreciate any input from the mayor and from the council people on, on those issues. That'll be coming up after I meet with Charlene to work out a proposed date.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just a clarification, why that would be at the labor meeting and not at the full council, and, because it was not something that was on our agenda for the retreat, so I'm just curious why we wouldn't be having a council meeting or, or work.
I'm just curious why we wouldn't be having a council meeting or a work session or something to do that.
Everybody will have an opportunity to speak. One committee had to step forward and get things rolling, and I thought this would be the appropriate committee.
Councilman DeBleek.
I would agree with Councilmember Nelson that that should be a work session of the council and not, not just the Labor Committee. I think the attorney is, you know, has advised us that only the Labor Committee members are supposed to attend the Labor Meeting. So that...
Could I respond to that?
Sure you may.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Somebody has to start moving in the right direction here. The Labor Committee will start looking at the issues that are related to labor and beyond. If we need to form a committee or form another meeting, strategy meeting with the city council to prioritize our issues, we can do that. I'm not opposed to that. But somebody has to start taking the leap forward. We can't just ignore and walk away from this retreat and not move ahead with accomplishing our tasks. And I'm task-oriented. I like to accomplish my task anyway, Mr. DeBleek, if possible. But it's just a suggestion, and we're going to start it through the Labor Committee and work out some kind of a meeting. At that meeting, we can also maybe discuss how we're going to go about doing this, but it's going to be put on the agenda.
Councilman, has the entire council been added, or been invited?
There is no date set.
There is no date yet. We're just in the strategy. I just want to inform the council that we're not done with our homework yet.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thursday, December twelfth, community development, four forty-five at City Hall.
With that, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Yanish.
Go ahead.
Mayor Yanish and members of the council, if I could add to upcoming events, next Tuesday, December tenth, as part of our park planning process that we've been working through for the last few months with the Mid-Minnesota Development Commission, we'll be hosting an open house next Tuesday, December tenth, five to six thirty at the Wilmer Library. Our hope is to get some community input into the planning process that we've got related to the park plan. We will have some breakout sessions there that will augment the work that the Mid-Minnesota Development Commission and the committee has done related to the park plan currently. We'll seek input for other projects related to parks that people might be interested in, and upon that open house, we'll start the final process of developing the final document for the park plan. And as, as part of that process, we'll probably have some focus groups with some more targeted people related to some of the projects that we think the community has some, has voiced some concerns for. Dog Park has come up, archery parks, amphitheaters, things like that. So to get final documentation in the park planning process, we'll, we'll seek out a little bit more input from the community as well. And the open house on December tenth will be our first step in creating that input from the community.
Thank you.
So again, next Tuesday, December tenth, five to six thirty at the Wilmer Library, an open house related to park planning for the future of Wilmer Parks.
And you might add, be there, right?
It would be nice to have more people than my...
Thank you. And thank you, Bruce. Go ahead.
Well, just wanted to take a quick opportunity to announce that there will be an informational meeting this Thursday evening at seven PM in this room for property owners that live along Lakeland Drive from Wilmer Avenue to Civic Center Drive. As a courtesy, we want to bring these people together and give them a heads up on what to expect for that major project next summer. Not only the lift station and the forest main at the north end, but the overlay and the trail work that will be required and the possible acquisition of right-of-way. So we would urge all the people that live along Lakeland Drive that are interested in this project to show up. Additionally, we did send individual mailed notices to everyone as well, but in case those were misplaced, we want to get as many people here as we can to eliminate any heartburn that might exist over that project.
Thank you again for going above and beyond what was called for. You did a good job on that. Thank you very much. And I might just add, if I may, I have to say this. Not bad for a bunch of dysfunctional people. Thank you. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So the motion has been made and seconded. We are adjourned.